All right, I hereby call this city council meeting, Oregon, Oregon, October 3rd, 2023. To order at 7:00 PM, if we'll stand, we'll do the five absolute pledge allegiance. Ready and begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll do our, our roll call. Looks like we have everybody but one. And uh. That's Isaac Williamson, who is actually, he's resigned. So. The next piece that's gonna be on here is we are gonna appoint the city councillor. We're gonna have interviews for the city council vacancy. This term will be expiring December 31st, 2026. So the order that we're going to do this is we're gonna start with Sean Ferguson. Then we'll go to Stephen Fuss. It's just, you just got lucky because your name was first. Ethan Salata, and then it's, uh, Ragna Tannick? Did I say it right? Close enough? Okay. And then Laura Torres. So we have, uh. Questions. And we're just gonna do, start with, uh. Councillor Baumgartner. She'll read the first question. And then each one of you will have an opportunity to answer that question. And then we'll go to the next one, and the next one, and the next one, until everybody answers the four questions. Uh, there is a score sheet. We will have a score sheet. It is ranked scoring from five to one, five being the highest. And we will put our, has our name on the score sheet. So here, each councillor, uh, wins the score. They'll say your name, our name, and who we voted for. And we'll just do that. And then we'll tally up the scores, and then we'll be, see, uh, the person who our next city councillor is.
Mayor.
Yes.
Um, I don't know if it would be helpful if they're sitting up where I could see them when I, when they're answering, or if they're gonna stand up.
I was gonna ask him actually to five, just to come up in the hot front in order, and then be able to go that avenue.
Thank you.
You bet. We'll ask the questions in order.
Mr. Ferguson, we're interviewing five of these individuals for this one vacancy. Please articulate for us why you should be appointed as the new Portland City Councilor.
Good morning. I just, I wanna go to get back to community development for a long time. I don't know the other background, but I've been here a long time. I'm making good later. I think I can sort of help make, uh, good decisions.
So now we have the microphones of people on, uh. Online will be able to hear. So, I think Mr. Puzzles next. Yeah, Steve. Yeah, most requested question.
Or you're not gonna ask the same person until we're finished with the questions? Then go to the next person? Are you gonna rotate there?
Well, I was thinking each person would answer the same question. Is that not? That's what we did in the past. That's what we did in the past. So we're gonna go, each person will answer the same question, and then Brenda will read the next question.
And maybe we'll start with somebody new the second time.
Correct.
Yeah, maybe somebody else will be the first one out.
Exactly. Mr. Bass.
We are interviewing five of us individuals for this one vacancy. Please articulate for us why you should be appointed as the new Portland City Councilor.
Um, I think I should be, as the next, as the next city councillor, uh, because I've been showing up to meetings, getting involved. Uh, I've only lived here four years, but I really do love this town. And like, uh, Mr. Ferguson was saying, I do wanna also get back. Uh, I've done that partially by being on the budget committee, that's the most recent year, but also been intending speaking out about issues, uh, in our city that I've seen, uh, that I wanna get all the things.
So I think I should be the next city councillor. Right, yes. Uh, on the, I was here to give back. Um, I wanna learn, I've been here for five years. Uh, volunteered in the community, uh, got, know people in the community. Then, this is just another way of giving back. Apparently I'm on planning commission for the city. And I've been doing that for just under two years. Uh, and this is how I made it up, um, how I made it up and all of that. That's the planning side, and I kinda just wanna get it inside, and see where that takes me. So, that's why I believe I should be the next city councillor.
Okay, so, um, my parents moved here about 35 years ago, and I've been in and out of the city. Um, so altogether, I probably lived here for like 12 years, you know, three to five to six year increments. Um, I remember my dad was on the planning commission and irrigation and where things were. And I'm on the planning mission right now, um, and he was always like, oh, they haven't done this yet, and they haven't done that yet. So I know what was on the books for many years that was supposed to be done, and hasn't, um. I'm not saying that any of that should be done, but I just would like to, I, um, have been, uh, attorney for the city of Ames, uh, a few years ago, maybe 15 at this point, um. And uh, I would just, I don't know, my dad just died, so I lost time on my hands. I had to retire from practicing while I was multiple sclerosis. So, um, having to kind of immediately retire maybe 10, 20 years earlier, I have time to deal with it, especially since he's passed on. I don't have to, not that I have to care for him, but I, um, we are children of doctors a lot, so I have freedom of time now. So, I, um, can help and do whatever is needed whenever I throw myself into it. There you go.
Good evening, personal congratulations and good luck to all of us who've been here. Thank you, Laura Torres, and I think I should be considered for the next city council. Um, I'm not a native of Borman, although this is my second year coming back to Borman. Previously, the military lifestyle brought us here, and also my husband is current, uh, he is also a local. Uh, as you can see, a resident of Borman for many years, so this was considered our home. And so, 2004, 2000, approximately 10, we were set in here. During those times, I was very involved with the local PTO, local initiatives for the school system, as well as education and all those things. So, Borman really grew on me during those times. And then the second time now that he retired and we had a chance to come back to Borman, because Borman has a way to pull you back in, uh, decided to get a little more involved, of course, because I do have, again, that inclination to be active in our community, support our members. But most importantly, my goal really for the city council is to be able to educate our citizens how to get involved and how to proactively really adapt more engagement so that they can better their lifestyle. And Borman has grown so fast and so rapidly that I think our community needs to reflect the initiatives that we are passing and we are promoting.
Let's start with Stephen Fuss.
Uh, yes, Stephen Fuss.
Welcome, Nancy. The Portland City, uh, excuse me, the Portland City Council very often deals with controversial and challenging issues where there are strong opinions on all sides, and yet the councillors, the council has to ultimately speak as one body. Talk to us about how you would maintain your individuality while working in a group or team environment.
Cool. Um, so I think I would maintain my individuality just partially because of my personality. Um, but also because I think I'm very good at looking at all angles of an issue. And so, I would be able to like, listen to all of you, consider what you are saying, synthesize it to what I think, and how I have interpreted the information, and then be able to come to a compromise that will hopefully work for everyone, or at least bring up, um, points that maybe we didn't think about, or maybe we, um, didn't look at. Um, I think also because I'm only 26, I am, um, no, and so I am a different generation, which has different viewpoints compared to, um, other people. Uh, and so I think that will also, um, help me keep my individuality while also being able to work with a group. And then, um, I'm also clear, and very openly clear, and that comes with a whole life experience that is different from others already. And so I'll be able to bring that uniqueness, as well as being a, um, representation for that community within this body and within the city. Um, yeah.
Okay, something has to be there.
Uh, sure.
All right. I'll try to do better this time. Okay.
The Portland City Council very often deals with controversial and challenging issues where there are strong opinions on all sides, and yet the council has to ultimately speak as one body. So talk to us about how you would maintain your individuality while working in a group or team environment.
So. You're saying you're my own individual, um. It's just. I have my own values, um, I have my own morals. I'm gonna stay on that path. There's, at the end of the day, we are all united around, as you said. But behind closed doors, in meetings, stuff like that, where I can voice my opinion. I'm gonna voice my opinion, and it might not be what everybody agree on, but it's how I feel out about, uh. What to the community, we're all on front, what's said here, and what's done in the meeting is what's done. And so that's what, you gotta stand behind what the board, uh, board comes up with ultimately, ultimately agree. Uh, but yeah, so individuality, I, like I said, I have my values and my morals, and I'm gonna stick behind that, so.
Okay. I come from laughing, looking at the statutes and the law, and then let's move to people on it every perspective, and hopefully you can start to redo and think about what. Maybe there's a middle ground, maybe there, it's just plain black and white, and you have no choice. So if you can't find anything in the middle and you have to make a decision one way or the other, of course, the council has to speak as one voice, and I would be one. I certainly would say, where are we? Look at the consequences of making those decisions as well, because that's important as, as well for the councils to look at. Put the law, what's best for the city, what's best for the individuals. And if you can get to the middle and get consensus, then you do that. If you can't, sometimes you just have to pick a hard one and go with it. And, um, I don't have a problem with that. But I do like to look for, what can we do? I like brainstorming a lot because you never know what you'll come across down that. I say something, and then somebody else piggybacks on that, and then pretty soon you're out of decision or an idea, you never have, when you stop it. So I do like to brainstorm, and I think that helps teams to grow and build as well. But if you don't have time for that, or the decision is just black and white, you have to go with it. And that's what happened.
Uh, thank you for that question. And so, um, I think in my personal perspective, I've had the opportunity for the past seven years to actually work for a nonprofit, be very involved in remote work, nonprofit work, in with a bipartisan, uh, you know, scenario work, um, work organization that has allowed me to really have the opportunity to work as a team, work remotely as an individual, but also be able to analyze and be presented to the opportunities of making decisions and making decisions really as an individual, but also making decisions that will support a group at large. And so that really is what I will take as a, as a member of the city council, is being able to very actively educate myself, work, um, independently, but also understand what are some of those issues that will very affect the entire community at large. But also work as a team, because those are some of the skills and the assets that I have already embedded in me as a, as an employee, as a community activist in the past, and as well as as a, as a mom and individual that has been able and blessed to have very diverse lifestyles through many communities. And so that really has allowed me and exposed me to really be able to have many different perspectives and respect other points of views, but at the end of the day, get what's best for the community and support what's the end goal as a team, because as a team we'll move forward better.
All right.
I think one of the things I have is, uh, managing thousands of people over the last three years, with these, uh, big companies in there. Uh, and doing that, I'll be a coach and mentor, HR sometimes, and whatever, that'll serve the place. And that means listen to all sides, and come together what's best for the team. And I think that's what I would bring to the table. I would speak my mind, but, uh, focusing on the issue and not, because we're a separate person. And bringing what's best for the city of Borman, and not really what's best for Shunkers.
Yeah, right. I was giving you a chance, because I'm gonna defer my question, and I'll let, uh, Applewoman, Christine Cuevas.
Excellent. We'll start with Ethan. Have you previously served on a governing board of any type? Business, government, nonprofit, organization, church, et cetera? Or as a leader in any organization? If so, brief, if so, please briefly describe the organization, your role, and the number of years you served in that capacity.
It's about, well, it is. Uh, it's on a governing board, uh, currently, as I said before, I'm on a planning commission. Uh, I've been there for, I believe it's just under two years, a little under two years, and, um. Other than that, I haven't served on any boards. Um, I do, I'm president of EFA, which supports the Firefighter Association. Um, currently, it's not a governing body, but it is a board. Um, and I've been doing that for about a year. Uh, leadership roles, uh, lieutenant of Florida Fire. And I've been doing that for a year and a half or so now. Um, before that, I've been there for five years. Uh, as a senior art director, you are a leader, uh, you're just not the new leader of the show. I think there is more to that question than just what your experience was.
No, I think you answered it. Okay, well, I'm a former member of the Oregon branch of the National Complex Association. I'm, um, I'm serving on the finance, um, for the Oregon Trail Library um, districts, other than that, a couple of them now. Um, I'm on the planning commission with him. He's very good. Um. Also, what else am I doing? Something? Oh, I'm doing Lexington's Airport Advisory Committee. I have a map for Austin, Chicago, and all, but, uh, so I've been doing that. Most of my um, leadership roles have really been in advising nonprofits, work offices, that whole thing as a attorney, um, so, because I do, um, do a lot of business planning for, um, corporations, do the, all the filing stuff. I'm masters in law tax. I do a lot of the tax work with nonprofits, make sure they aren't doing all their documents right staying in line so they don't lose their nonprofit status. Um. What else? What else? Oh, I was, um, a topper over in, um, moved to Idaho for a little bit, the boys, and I was the dean of, uh, um, college order, um, Brown Mackey College, and I was also the department chair for the legal department, the business department. Um, kind of all the departments. Um, but anyway, um, so I did that, that was my leadership role. Uh, had to make sure we had our accreditation as a college, so, uh, had all of that going on. Um, I can't think of anything else, so I'm just going to move on. There you go.
So I'm currently served as a, uh, you wanna call it advisor and ambassador for, it's because I represent a community called Brundec, uh, which is a prison community for military connected all over the world, uh, that is more of an entertainment. And that's, and my capacity, I'm really, I'll just, um, right now focusing and wanting to just do one thing at a time, so this will be my really, um, full and only capacity to be considered council, because I believe that I'd be able to do, um, more proactive work if I'm, um, you know, engaged in one, uh, institution or one specific endeavor. Now, in the past, during my Borman years, in 2004, 2008, I was PTO president of the San Roman Elementary for almost two years, but I led a lot of really very successful carnival events, uh, parent leading events, and a lot of very great supportive activities, and we raised over $10,000 to get a new playground. And then, uh, as I departed, also during, uh, this past three years or, or before, prior to moving, really getting back to Borman, I was very active with the military veterans community with, um, doctor, uh, sorry, with, uh, man, assembly member Tata Moore, I think you may have said his last name, District 77, but I earned military's awesome year during 2020, right before leaving California because of my contributions to that particular council, and also as a former member for the Veterans Chamber of Commerce.
All right, to answer your question, uh, no, I haven't, uh, in my role, as a local, I was in an organization, uh, over the, yeah. But other than that, no, I have not.
Um, mine's great, uh, as a great leadership positions, um, during college, I was on the board of directors for, uh, a creative collective, an environment creative, and art and children, um, both to bring our church community together through the arts. So we did a lot of event planning and hosting events and, um, stuff like that, and sharing our art as well, that was really fun. Um, and then currently, I'm the secretary for the National Association of Music Educators, District Six, which services, um, not only Borman, but also Harmiston, Pendleton, Helix, and most of Eastern Oregon. Um, and in that capacity, I'm mostly an oak kicker for the, uh, fall and spring meetings, but I also do work closely with event planning through that as well.
Start with Ragna, did I say that right? So what do you believe to be the top three most pressing community concerns to the city of Borman?
Well, I think that sounds mean, but I think we need to add more integration of the whole community. I feel like it's very divided, and, um, so that kind of comes back to brainstorming. And I don't know if the council has done, um, if they've reached out to community to, um, smaller groups in town and said, hey, bring us your ideas, bring us what you see. Um, I see that I would like to do something kind of at, I don't know if I'm doing these pretty inner or, uh, you're just gonna have to.
You just listen, you just tell me three.
Uh, but I think one place, uh, there's a lot of places, I think one of the, uh, but, um, I think kind of the cemetery is somewhere where you can reach out to the churches and say, hey, do you want to? And maybe we can't do this, but if, um, would you like to take a weekend to help clean up? Or do something? Now, some of this is because my dad just died, and I'm paying attention to the cemetery. Um, but I do think that that's somewhere that one could start and see what grows out of that, people, um. You know, maybe the Catholics say, I wanna take this weekend, or, oh, hey, yeah, but that just, oh, yeah, we'll do it. Catholic Church does it, or not that that's exclusive for that weekend, but that you're trying to bring the community together. I, um, have been, um, have a gentleman that's helping my mom and I with some land that we have, and, um, he only speaks Spanish. And my high school Spanish is coming back very, very slowly, but I'm like, it is coming back. But he's lived here for a while, and he doesn't, um, seem very integrated. He knows his community, but the rest of the community, he doesn't really, doesn't feel like he's a part of. That's why I'm being through our broken Spanish communications. So, I just think, uh, I had somebody the other day say that, um, if they've never lived in Borman, because they think that the environment is, is bad. And I was like, what? I didn't know that. Um, where have I been that I didn't know that? But if it is, I should know that I should be part of the solution for that and going, okay, what do we do? Um, if some people have that perception, which this person asked her, there was some Pendleton, and they said, oh, I live there, but I'll never come back. So, um, is that true? Please say yes. Okay, good job.
Okay, so, you know, back to my previous life here, everything appeared to be happily ever after, right? Everything was small, and you could go through the community and sort of, uh, the local shop, and find individuals, and get to know who was walking where, and, you know, you knew almost everybody and just about anyone, um. But I think some of the most local community concerns now that I've been here for the last two years, uh, that I have observed is definitely the growth, you know, how is the council, the city, or these members, as well as the community citizens, really, um, aware of how fast Borman is expanding? One of the things that really, uh, sort of had my, my husband in mind, and, and, you know, his big, um, I guess, um, my, my, his biggest, I don't want to go into the back of Borman, was we're going back to a small community where everybody knows each other, you know, it's such a great place for raising kids. So how fast is our community growing? You know, has those issues that, you know, where is our, our local community is really integrating and understanding how fast and where are some of those potential, you know, I don't know, risk of going too fast or not going fast enough? Or, you know, how that impacts their, um, their economics? Uh, the other thing that I've seen that I observe is, of course, the community engagement. Uh, very well turned out for almost every event, every activity out there, uh, lack of awareness, either it's because we have a lack of diversity among most key, uh, positions, or perhaps, uh, there's just that, you know, local, um, engagement, adventure activities, or, or the new generation, and, you know, has to be engaged in new methods, new ways have to be applied. You know, local um engagement adventure activities or or the new generation and you know, has to be engaged in new methods, new ways have to be applied. So that we can engage our community, uh also housing costs, gosh, I remember my first house that we bought here was seventy nine thousand. And that was to us was like a huge wow, this was two thousand and four. Coming back to that, you know, knowing that our house now is worth three times, four times as much. Is how can I, how can our locals, my my neighbors from two neighborhoods down the street afford homes like that anymore? That really is one of the most stressing concerns to me and you know, to be able to have um. I don't know, an opportunity to address those, which in our community, you know, how to, how to be aware of what to do in in given that. They really want to earn property here in Borden, but most importantly, you know, what's happening, who's 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 making all these decisions? And with these decisions being made in my part of our local population that has been growing here in Borden and has roots together.
This I can just speak for my concerns, I don't know the previous concerns, um. As I've always lived here. So currently, this is my older boys, they went to school here, or aside as I did, and then uh. My two younger children, we actually take down two area in school. Uh one of the things I know is growing with my older boys growing up, can I go everybody's long in town and let you play on the farm, Army Corps of Engineer Field. That was one of my concerns at the time and uh to the young ladies response back there uh. Another reason why is if if you're, when I am an arrogant. If you're out of practice, it's like a full game used to be here in Borden, you know what I mean? Uh and I and I understand that uh Land West is not giving these parents, they ought to go watch, she only plays sports. That was one of my concerns, uh another thing I always thought, Borden needs. Something like uh you know, Harmiston shuts down that main street, all the way shut down now, it's like where the community just goes hang out. They don't, and does the same thing down there, so Borden's disadvantage, we have this freeway going through the middle of the town. And that's to me, for me, something like that, uh whether it's. Issues that people block, the war and kind of harms there already Pendleton has. Uh I don't have all the other concerns, they're not really big concerns to me, as I'm getting older, I find it, I think that. Even though I have pretty moderate, something wrong compared to other places around here, but. Why wouldn't I ever go if we have the Amazon there, you know what I mean, why wouldn't my taxes go all the way down? Then the city council here is not going to decide my taxes for that, because my house grow, my house. We had, we added an addition on my house, then my wife showed me the the new taxes. Uh if we have this uh business base in Borden, why? I mean, it's just gonna get older, I don't think that my house should jump up that much, but that's just my concern, right?
Um so I've been very vocal about how the costs uh to sort of go as far as to you guys as well as to my little community of teachers that I work with and hang out with. Um one of the other ones that I've seen posted, but also had firsthand experiences with pedestrian and just road safety. That I know ODOT has some hand in, but um just walking down. Uh Main Street and having the intersections be where cars can't see and pedestrians. Have to either give up their way or almost get hit by a car who's not paying attention or has to stop in the uh. Crosswalks because they can't see around the buildings or the plants or the fences. Uh and then just something that I noticed on Facebook, like we have a lot of dogs that get out. Um and that have to be paid back, um I don't know if that's a community concern, but it's definitely something that's a very uh a common pattern. Uh that I've noticed through um the Borden info group, um and other info groups that uh Borden has as well.
So first, very uh. It was there in the urban town is the. The integration between the standings and it just. Not being equipped with one, um so that is a big concern, um. I'm getting on the same page, I don't know if this is not getting out, but um we need to support community involvement, so. Uh the along the roads, for sure, um. I as somebody that's on the road all the time, the our roads, this is something, but our roads, sorry, stuff in roster. Um something like that, I know it's in process of getting developed and whatnot, but just taking care of better care of our roads. Um is the um is a big community thing I hear of, but. Uh the other one was, I think it's kind of came and gone a little bit, um but still hear about it once in a while is the uh. Water uh contamination, so I know it's more in the county than it is in the city and the city is taking uh. In advancements, I guess, to protect that, test it, stuff like that, um but it is a big concern, people. Still I'm hearing about it from, I mean, the Los Angeles City and they're still talking about it, they still hear about it, so. That is another concern as well, thank you.
Thank you, that would uh include the the interviews right now, were you gonna speak again, forgive it to you again?
We thought they're.
I know she had it there, yeah. So. So we're gonna tally up the scores and then we're gonna turn in, well, one thing that I wanted to say is I want to thank you, all five of you for coming and doing this. This is probably the hardest appointment that I am going to have to make since I've been mayor and been on the council. Because we have five people that can all do the job. And that's what makes it hard and. It's exciting to see the involvement of people wanting to get involved because we need to get more of it. And especially as our community and the city of Borden grows and. The money keeps coming into Borden and we need to get people involved to be able to to make sure that we. Continue to grow in the right direction. And when you get on a position like this, you get to find out how slow government is if you haven't been been involved in that. And uh not going on tangent, it it's slow, it's frustrating, but what's really cool about it is. You understand why things are the way they are, you may not like it. And but you are in the process of doing that, of finding out why things are, and you just try to make a change, to make it better. And that's what's exciting and I applaud all of you for doing this, or if you will be disappointed. But uh that doesn't mean that you can't run, you can't run for a seat when when there's a vacancy. And that's the biggest thing is trying to get people, it would be nice if there's five, six people who want to get involved every election. Instead of maybe one or none or open, I mean, just take a look at your ballot, uh it's it's sad. All right, so I'll finish up valid county line and everybody else probably done.
No, not even the most.
I'm going to go ahead and tally it.
But does tallying either matter? I mean, I'm asking. Tally or? Yeah, are we tallying or are we voting? I think they're just voting.
Oh, I think in my tally and I'm voting on this with your highest.
Well, who you choose. Those are your first um. Run it back or you want to do that? Yeah, your first end, who you choose, who you choose, yeah, one, yeah.
And I get it back, it's done.
Well, I'll read them off and then you'll keep the score, is that what you're gonna do?
Yeah, you can, you just, all you need to do is just say who the counselor was and who they they voted for, correct? So who needs to run is the valid.
Right, and then you're gonna keep, or do you want me, how about I read it and you tally the score and then you will. I mean, everybody else is gonna be able to give it out, but. Correct, so I'll just start with the one that I have on top. Counselor Bongarner, Sean Ferguson. Counselor Pettigrew, Ethan Salada. Counselor Rockwell, Ethan Salada. Counselor Cuevas, Laura Torres. Counselor Prophet, Laura Torres. And then Mayor Keeper, Ethan Salada. Uh council member, thank you. I would like to once again encourage, thank everybody uh for their participation. I will do the uh swearing of Ethan right now. He talked over. Out of the hot seat.
What would you like us to do with our votes for? Yeah, well.
We'll end it, we'll turn it down. Okay, sure, right, all right, so Ethan, you're gonna. So I swear again, I'll just uh. You'll repeat after me, raise your arms, swear please, I am Ethan Salada, I Ethan Salada. You solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States. I do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Oregon and the ordinances of the city of Borden. And the state of Oregon and ordinances, ordinances of the city of Borden. To the best of my ability, I will faithfully discharge the duties of counselor of the city of Borden during the period for which I was appointed, so help me God. To the best of my ability, I will faithfully discharge the duties of counselor of the city of Borden during the period of which I was appointed, so yeah. Congratulations, thank you, be back.
Yeah, just turned on.
All right, so we have an important awards presentation, but neither of them are here, so we'll just mail those awards to them.
Who stopped any of you right here for an award?
Oh, I understood what you're saying.
I said people in the audience about when they heard you're for an award.
Do you have one for her?
No.
All right, so we'll go on to the approval or minutes, September five, twenty twenty three, our workshop.
I'd like to move to approve the minutes from September fifth, twenty twenty three.
I'll second that, I have a motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? It it passes, okay, uh September five, twenty twenty three, our regular meeting.
I would be approved the minutes of September fifth, twenty twenty three, regular meeting, I'll second that.
I have a motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? September nineteenth, twenty twenty three, our workshop.
I'd like to move to approve the minutes from September nineteenth, we might have the workshop.
I'm all second.
Yeah, motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And our last one of September twenty, twenty twenty three, our city county court meeting.
I vote you approve the minutes of September twenty, twenty twenty three, city county court meeting.
I second it.
Hey, I got a motion in a second, any questions or any discussion?
I I have a question which I brought up during the meeting and maybe we should take some time to decide if. There's more to these meetings when we attend, that was one of the comments at the end was, what is the purpose of these meetings? Is it to just inform each entity, um you know, what's going on and then that's it? Or are we supposed to be brainstorming ideas or? Talking with one another about maybe each entity could help each other with something, you know, um not formally vote on something obviously, but. Just have more discussion other than just reading what's going on and then we then we leave. For me personally, I feel like it's not very productive, we could do that in an email. That's just my opinion.
So Mr. Rockwell, um I don't need to catch you off, um that would have been a great uh counselor comment.
Yes.
Uh because it did, that is mentioned in our minutes, right?
I believe so.
You know what I mean, that would have been a great counselor, I mean, I appreciate.
You know what I mean? That would have been a great counselor. I mean, I appreciate your comments, but we were just checking the minutes.
Gotcha.
Sorry, kind of a procedural.
Yeah, should have cut me off sooner, David.
Well, I didn't want to, I didn't want to interrupt you, so, but you bet. Any, any, any discussion about the minutes of, of the meeting? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Financial report.
Yes, you have those on top of your package for month ending and fiscal year in June thirty, twenty twenty-three. And then July thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Got those?
Yeah, I have. I know I got three.
Okay, so you're June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. These are still un-audited. I am currently in the public meeting with our auditor. Um, they've been crazy busy, so it's been kind of a hybrid. They come in there too. We're doing by email. They're gonna be coming again in this month of October. I don't have an exact date yet. But they are just down the road in Hermiston, so any day they can just call me like, hey, it's just now work. And of course, I'm open for whenever they are available. With our June thirtieth year end, we will notice it for our general fund. It looks like, you know, we spent a lot of money that month. But although that is the end of our fiscal year, we do have some insurance that workers comping out for the entire year that is due in June for the next fiscal year. So we have a lot of next year expenses that have to be paid at year end, but that's the case every year. So you'll see like these huge expenses in the month of June that are, in a sense, prepayments for July's new fiscal year. Um, the other big one that you'll notice down in the Geo Bond Fund, our payments come out every June and December, and that's why you see that huge payment there. And then you won't say anything as an expenditure until December. For our net cash change, that's gonna be a negative number for a while because some of our huge projects like our Geo Bond, we received that money you know, a couple of years ago. Our ARCA money we received a couple of years ago. But we have the expenses coming out now. So we have all the expenses for our water phase two, for our city hall expansion and the ARCA funds being expended. So that will be negative for quite a while until we kind of finish up with these big expenses and get back to what we call routine or normal. Um, down in our budgeted inter-fund transfers, the central U R A district finished paying off the city, the final sixty-five thousand, two hundred and ten dollars it owed. And so that one is fully paid off. If you want any new projects there. That's okay. For our July thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Interest rates have been holding steady for the better month. They are still kind of holding steady. They're thinking that maybe in the next week or two, we might see another jump. The feds are trying to hold it from increasing so much, but they said there will be increases coming in interest rates. Um, and then for our expenses, everything is normal except for again, our big construction projects. So you'll see the capital project fund and the building fund having been, you know, over half a million dollars being expended in a month, but that's all the construction cost for those infrastructure projects. Our ARCA funds haven't been expended quite as quickly. We're still waiting for. We've started that project. It's just still some of the supplies are a little slowly getting here. But we're, we're finally moving forward. I've been working with Tony creating the electronic file. So many some testing. We did do ten meters. We won't name who, but they were kind of random. They got the new water meter sensors put on them and we've done electronic testing with them. And so we are moving forward. It's not quite as fast as we expected.
Yeah, I wasn't one of the ten.
No, you were not.
I was, I know that. Because I opened it up.
Well, you're not supposed to open them up. Only public works before you.
That's where I shut my water up to my house. I'm not, I'm not supposed to be able to shut the water up to my house?
No, no.
No.
You what?
If you shut the water off yourself and you break the meter.
I'm laughing for that. Yes. Well, that would, yeah, isn't that? Everybody shuts their water off. They sell, that's the only. It's the only place I have. I put my house in. I know where the water is. I know it's the main line that goes into my house.
Well, talking about educating the community.
Learned something. Well, why do they sell the key at the Home Depot? Because that's probably because none of your cities like that.
People like you.
All right.
So.
My wife's probably grinning online somewhere.
And that's kind of all I have for you on the financials. We moved the line thirty-first. We did have some issues with Cassell, some really, really weird issues in the last couple of months. I mean, I don't know if that had to do with upgrades or what it was, but we pulled a lot of I T support tickets. Um, so our staff have been really good about working through all of those and getting things all straightened out. So.
Is there any questions as far as the financial report? So as far as the financial report, I'm gonna toot the horn of the city because I had, I like to do that. Uh, when, when we are in a very good position as far as the city, we have staff and we have individuals who take very good care of our budget. We are very well off. When I go to other cities, other cities are not as well off as we are. So when we take a look at our budget and the things that we are doing as a city, we are very well off financially. We are not hurting. The only hard part for the citizens is, is, you know, it's hard to see where that money gets spent. And that's hard. That's hard to see. We talk about roads and things like that. It's just really hard. But when I go and I talk to other mayors throughout the, the region, they're like, you have how many people and your budget is how large? And it's just exciting that we are able to be financially sound. And so we have a staff that does a very good job. So financial report is done. So now it's to the public comment. Eddie Ramos. For the topic of our homecoming and community events. You have the floor.
So I actually, excuse me. This is Julia Williams. And we kind of just wanted to discuss what's going on next week. And just to inform you guys and that hopefully we can get the word out for the community as well because we do have a community event that I'll let Julia speak about a little more that we would like to invite the whole community to kind of show some appreciation for the new lights that we're kind of donating for the school. So.
The microphone for you.
So, yeah, I'll, I'll let Julia take the floor and yeah, I'll, I'll, actually, before I hand it off there, I guess I, I'll just hand, I didn't begin enough copies for everybody, but maybe you guys can kind of hand them down. But here's some of the papers that we have that she's gonna kind of share with you guys to get out. So.
So on October eleventh, we have the community night, which will, will host at the football slash soccer field. And we're gonna do a light show presentation, a donor appreciation, the homecoming activities, which is the Power Cup. We'll have tunnel four, the pyramid, the bonfire with the concessions and a DJ. And then we have the Homecoming Spirit Week, which is starting on Monday, October ninth, which the teachers will just send students and the students will test as teachers. On Tuesday, October tenth, the Fan Allen Duo slash Trio. For Wednesday, October eleventh, we'll have Pink Day. Thursday, October twelfth, we'll do color wars, which the president will just in gray, jeans, white, soft ones, and blue and see what's up there.
So, yeah, this kind of just, like I said, just a little bit informative and hopefully to kind of highlight what we have coming. And that way we can try to, our main goal, I guess, is to try to improve the student involvement and raise the school spirit level in a positive way. And I think the things that she mentioned is kind of that first step in doing so. So she's part of the leadership group. She's kind of taking charge of like trying to plan stuff and all that kind of stuff. So I really appreciate her coming here. I know it's not easy to speak in front of a whole council, so I am a little bit here. But hopefully we can get that out. I did forget to make the copies of those, those poster papers in Spanish, so I can be working on that. Hopefully, if that posted, like I said, we want to get the whole community, well, not just the students. It should show some appreciation for those who donated and those people that continue to donate for the school. So, so, yeah, hopefully we see all of you guys there as well. So they're super nice and I just wanted to thank Julia for speaking and thank you guys for listening. And I guess if there are any questions for us.
So, Mr. Ramos, are you aware that if you call the city hall and give them this key information, they can post on their other board, your board, and then, yeah, and then it could be posted out so people can read it and be motion banned?
Okay, awesome. I'll definitely do that.
Thank you, Eddie. The big thing, if you haven't been to the high school field to see the new lights and to see the light show and what they can and can't do, it's definitely worth going ahead and seeing. It is a very cool something that's really happened through our sponsorship and the partners in our area. To be, I think it was McCurd, it was U E C, and who was the third one?
V C B A.
V C B A. Those are the three entities to get those lights. And if you haven't experienced them, you need to go and be able to witness them. It is what they can do, they haven't even started to even address what they can do. And I'll stop there. George Schaimer.
Mr. Hammond has asked me to talk to you a little bit, share a little bit what's going on with B P R D, the Park and Rec District. And so I'll finish real quick because I don't want to waste your time. And there's a lot to go through tonight. So as you know, the fireworks show on August fifth down Park, it was a, it was a highlight for the summer. It was a great way to begin the summer. About all the entities with the emergency services were represented as well. And we're pleased that Park was in great shape. Please that on the turnout, we have a fall harvest that we're getting away. We used to do a lot of crafts. I've asked my staff, stop doing crafts. We're, we're a health district. I want to do healthy things. And mental health is good, and that's where the crafts come in. I get that. But we're gonna do more when we're doing kid-oriented events. We're gonna do like a Florida lava type events. We bought some different textures and sensory advices to try to help the kids try to some new experiences. So we're changing our route, what we're gonna do there. Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna do the Halloween haunt here on, on the twenty-seventh to twenty-eighth of October. Uh, haunted area down softball field. Uh, we'll participate with the chamber on the trunk and tree, but we're also gonna provide a maze down at the rec center. So once people are done at the trunk and tree at the state center, they can come right on, walk on down to the to the rec center and they can participate in with our little maze that we have there, the pool area. We are going to be closing down the rec center for two weeks in November, from the twelfth through the twenty-sixth. So we can resurface the pool deck. It, it's a safety thing that we're doing for that. And then we decided to get made time, same time, we'll resurface the gym floor and the aerobic room floor. Uh, and since we're gonna close that, we're gonna, I'm just gonna close the whole thing down. And we're gonna do a deep clean in the weight room and bathrooms and everything else and make sure we're, when we reopen on the twenty-seventh, we're top shape. We are in the process of hiring a recreation coordinator. We've hired a sports coordinator, and this is where we've changed things up a little bit. The sports coordinator will be a part-time to run the youth sporting events, and we're going to work with the local groups that are running uh, youth sports here. We're really fun. We feel like we should be in charge of that overall. And as part of the reason for having the sports coordinator position and we want to be able to work with, you know, we know we're not gonna just take everything on at once. And we want the entities to work with us and we just build this and where we, they feel comfortable letting us take over. So right now we're doing volleyball. And we also, our, our sports coordinator is going to work with adult sports as well, recreation sports. And we got adult, we've got seven teams this year going on right now. We're, we're in the process of hiring a, a marketing associate to help with that process. Uh, we're always hiring lifeguards, it seems like. But we're, I want to get some adult lifeguards to come in. So. And then we just hired a new customer for the rec center as well. Our campground, this is kind of great. It's, we're, this summer, we're at ninety-six percent occupancy. So very happy with that. The last two months, we're averaging eight, seven percent. So we're doing okay there. And now we're starting up our winter raids, our winter long-term stays. So we do that from October first through the end of March. So someone, if any of you or people around that are listening, if they want to come in during uh, the winter month, they can do that for a long-term stay, but also in December first is when we start our reservation process for next year. And people will know that part. It's December first, and then they can get online and reserve their spots. Uh, and it's all online. So I'm ready for that to crash that day here online. Great news. And I know Mayor Keeper knows this, but the pool is now open at five thirty in the morning. And it has been, when I left at six thirty, there was thirteen people that had come in early morning from five thirty to six thirty. Uh, and that was a good group. And then I know by ten o'clock, there was over forty people that had used the pool that morning. So I was pretty excited about that. Um, we have a tennis program going on with some of our staff members are building them up into it. That would be like our aquatics coordinator. He went through the tennis program and now he's the coordinator. And we also did that with our front desk person as well. Uh, we have multiple fitness classes that are being offered, and we're also looking at adding more at this time. Uh, we're hosting Special Olympics swim team practices right now. And if you ever get a chance, go down Mondays and Wednesdays, I think this, go down and just watch them. They're just fun. They're having a blast. Some things that you may not know, but we take care of as the park district. Uh, we take care of the field that we're getting paid to accompany, uh, the two soccer fields. We take care of the on and off ramps here, the grassy areas you're going on and off of the interstate. We take, help take care of the grasses here on Main Street. Uh, the park over in Zuzu Street. Um, and then the little rest area parks that are just on the, this outside of the interstate as you come off. Waggon wheel and, or, and I think that it's all that, O, 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 is that? Waggon wheel and, uh, Ford and I think that it's called that, O, O, Ford, is that what it is here?
I don't know.
I, I can't remember the name of that one, but on each side, on Front Street, um. So last thing I'd like to say is this, we really want to get the word out that when people want to use, uh, our facilities. Uh, mainly the rain apart, uh, there's a, the, uh, facility use form, we need people to fill out. Uh, I, I talked to a group just recently, they said, no, they don't need to fill out a form. Uh, um, I, I really think that when there's events going on and we're putting the effort to. To make sure it's ready for them, we really want, we want people to, oh, we want our logo out there. And saying that we're helping sponsor their events, your events, whatever it is, uh, I, I, I just common courtesy for it. Uh, because we want, I, I, I tell people all the time, if there's something I can do for our park. To help our community, we're going to do it. Um, I can't tell, you know, I've only been in this since June, in this position as CEO of the Park and Rec. And it has been the most exciting time for me to just give back. And I've got a great staff, I'm really happy with that and, uh. I continue, I was asked to, um, apply for this position and I declined. I, I just, there's, it's just too new right now. Um, and I just gotta put more time into this and get this going. I've still got things I'm still trying to accomplish that. I've got to be accomplished before I'm ready to jump in and help out. I know there'll be vacancies in the future and I do plan on being a councilman down the road. But, uh, I appreciate Mr. Hammond for let me have, give a talk, share this with you. Um, I hope it gives you a little insight of what we're doing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we'll go to action items, resolution nineteen twenty-three, declare surplus property.
So this is an old charger that is in no use at the city. Right, it's an older retired niece car that's been retired.
Is it Mr. Chairman's old car?
Uh, no.
Still, there's going to be surplus.
We finally got rid, this is, uh, this is the old twenty ten charger that, uh, we phased out of the police department. Turned it into, well, tried to turn it into a stat car, but it was past its prime then. And it's definitely past its prime now.
Right, the motion.
Move their doctor's, this is number nineteen, that's two thousand twenty-three, the resolution declaring city award of a published property as census.
Their motion now, I have a second.
I'll second it.
Air motion a second, any discussion on this? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Other business, well, this is, we kind of got it. An introduction of the board, maybe an advisory outreach, uh, Mr. Hammond.
Yeah, so this is not a, the original resolution, we are not going, um, there yet. From, from what I've gathered and the input, this is kind of where we want to start. That the high school will come every council meeting and share the happenings of the high school. Um, I know Wendy River, the principal, would also like to do the same thing, um, every month, um, they. I gave them a little more time, so they'll start in November, um, and then Sam Boardman would be more of a recognition. And a lot of this stems from, um, our keeper's input and then this, this desire to, uh. Council, councilman profit keeps bringing up this community, so when we talk about that, this is the goal. Try and get more people connected, try to let them get involved in what, uh, the city is doing. So I'm hoping that this outline is okay. Again, this is not a resolution, we're not changing the original resolution, this is more of just a. Plan, how do we want to say that, if that looks okay.
And, uh, this, uh, goes back to, uh, I, Chuck Phillips' time. And for me, this is, you know, this is Chuck Phillips' stuff right here that I'm trying to. Wanted to try to get going again, to try to get more people to come into the city, City Hall. And if, uh, and the more that we as a group do that, whether it be through recognition, because. Those little kids at Sam Boardman think it's super cool, I remember when my wife brought it in and most of you were there. Uh, that was super cool for those kids to do it, and the more things that we can do as a group to encourage people to come in. And I think this is just a real small way to get those kids. I mean, even the sixth grade, I mean, Julia came in and had to do, she would have never done that had we not done this. So, uh, that's pretty clear. So if there's any other ideas that people want to come in to participate in our city council meetings or anything. Uh, let's, let's talk about it, let's, let's do that. City logo and the motto update.
Hey, so again, this is. There, people just shared with me is the time that we, that we move. Past the current logo that is in this way here and then the motto, um, on the river on the way. So this is a, a time just to talk about that, it's got, it's the council and the wife need to move forward. I did give it a few thoughts, a lot of this is trying to, we have several signage. And our logo is nowhere, it's not on the signage, so trying to make that connection where the signage went to the city. Um, so there's a couple of, uh, examples in there, um, the one. The one thought would be to have it possibly reflect what's on the water tower, which is the, the sun. The river and then.
Boardman on top. It would be the last one, just to say Chamber of Commerce.
Correct, but it would be, yeah, Boardman underneath, uh, the sign, not on, uh. The Boardman, but again, that's just a discussion coming from you all. Um, and then how to go about the, um, the motto change. I, I know at one point there was a, uh, contest or something, maybe that's not what we need to do, but I. I'm open to how we do it and just have people flood it in and then as a council, you can navigate and select five out of the. Ones that come in, we go from there, again, just thoughts.
This is an open discussion?
Yeah, yeah.
I think the only concern about, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with opening up to the public, but I think that. If you just open up anything, there's also, you know, you're going to have to, uh, sift through. People that are not taking it very serious. And so, um. I, I don't know how you would, you would go about addressing that, first I just, maybe we as a council come up with. Our own as a group and then we open that up to the public and say, this is what we should vote on. Or this is our choices, or this is what we discussed or whatever. I think that you would probably get a better response halfway versus. The other route.
Yep, just we could even go through the schools, we're encouraging the schools. Those kids can take it to their families. We can, you know, we translate evident Spanish and English, they take it home and we could even make a contest within those schools. And have, I know Wendy River has a student council, I know the high school has a student council. And somehow this Sam Boardman could come up with something that they think is the best. With some clear parameters of what the city is looking for and be able to at least go through the schools. And if we wanted to even go larger, we could, but that I think at least, you know, send it to the kids and trying to see. How many of those kids might be interested into it and we might be kind of amazed on what some kids might come up with. On what they think.
Their vision of the town may be way different than the adults and that's probably not necessarily a mountain.
Good. Well, and one thing that if you really want to involve the parents of the kids. If we put together a small flyer or something that just sort of outlines what we're asking kids to think about. That could go on with kids, parents have a chance to do that. And support their kids with that.
Yes.
And it was less than anything coming through that you would have to sit through because it would go through the student body and the teachers.
Sure, I think it'd be cool, especially if we put a pretty nice prize on it, I'm not, I mean.
Little pizza party or something?
No, I think cash. No, I, I'm serious, I mean, your class can't vote. I'm not going to get that. I just think the individual, I mean, something that might be. I, I'm not saying cash is, but I, something that's pretty cool, that would be, hey. And figure out what it is and because this is a big deal for us, so if it's a big deal for us, why couldn't we make it a big deal for them by saying, hey? This is what you could win and this is, you know.
Well, maybe it could be, if you, maybe it's kind of the cash, maybe it could go to the school or whatever project they have going. But I think kids love to win against other kids. And if you compete kids against kids or schools against schools or grades against grades, you could.
But if a kid.
You could motivate them that way. And you're saying this is for the motto only, correct?
Well, whatever we, whatever, I mean, what, what, whatever, I mean, if it's the model, yeah, of course.
Or maybe even the logo.
Designed a high school. So if you have term or.
They do.
Do something with the high school. I don't know of a logo that.
And again, yep, and, and totally up to you. My thought of keeping the logo of what we, like what we have because it's on the boards. So that was the thought is limiting it, it's on the, it's on the water tower, it's already there. I've heard about like Boardman needs an identity, so not necessarily farming out the logo, but again, totally up to you. Is the.
It would probably cost some money in order to change the logos.
Well, and you're even talking all the signage as well, which.
That would increase.
If we could just go with the motto and, uh, make a contest out of it, it didn't have to be cash. But I think the whoever, we could have a winner of Wendy River, we could have a winner of Sam Boardman and we could have a winner of. Uh, the high school and then there's a grand winner, so you have four winners. And whatever that may be to, to, I'm not so sure, incentivize, incentivize is the right word, but we. But we would be able to reward the kid for being able to do that, that would be kind of cool, okay?
I think, um, I, I like the idea of, um, having the kids. I think, um, the primary thing though is just the recognition, I think that that's the most important thing. And I think it's a recognition of not just the kiddo, but the, the family, um, because if it's a younger kiddos, they probably got assistance. Um, but I think that that's just equally important because we want parents involved in their kids' lives. And so, um, I would think that the most important thing was the, the recognition. Um, the other thing that I, I had mentioned to you was, um. It does have to be, um, in combination with this, it can be at a different time, but, um, having an essay contest, um, through the high school. Um, just like the L O C has, um, with the, um. Prompt of if I was mayor for a day or if I was mayor of Boardman, um, and just being able to see what, what kids come up with.
And we do that, do we do that?
We will this year.
Okay, so we can connect that. Bang, connected to that.
So smack in the face right there, but that's okay. I still like you, my friend.
So would this be an annual event?
It's an annual event.
When is that?
I like that.
In the spring, I think.
It's just, yeah, it's.
Spring?
It's open right now.
Or maybe what is more important.
And then it's chosen in the spring and then they are awarded in the fall. Say, or in July or August.
So what, just to wrap it around, go Sam Boardman Wendy River High School and you're talking families, which kind of would. Incorporate more than just the kids, right? So, and a representative from Sam Boardman with a Wendy River represent and a. High school represent and then a brand product, so what the direction is?
Yeah.
And they're working just on the motto.
On the motto.
Yes.
Well, I don't even know how you go about adopting a motto on a logo.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, ask a question? Yes, because a regular citizen that doesn't have kids, do they not can be part of trying to inform the model for the cities?
Good question.
But that might be something that we.
I.
Maybe have that be their own group, I don't know.
I mean, I really could go Sam Boardman Wendy River.
Community.
The high school and then I could post something on the.
As a community member.
Yeah, community member.
Okay, I can do that.
Put it in the north.
In honor of George Shiner. No, it's.
So move forward with that?
Yes. A surplus of the old city shop.
Okay, so this is not a resolution, this is just simply to bring it up in front of you, I know we have to do a resolution. All I'm saying is it is prime real estate right on Main Street. I do not want to be a landlord, I don't think that's the, the role of the city is to be a landlord. There's several people that are vying for it, they, there's a couple of people that could even combine, it's just. It's, it's a hot area to go in, what we talk about is the city, what do we want to do, we want more amenities, that's a great location. Um, I've already talked to Raul, we do keep the two days. And our goal would be this, this winter, those days would be used to store. Equipment, the equipment we have, and then next winter we would have a facility where those, uh, things, those, the equipment would go.
So. So, okay, go ahead.
Are we allowed to ask what could possibly go there, would you sell it or?
It could be anything.
Anything. Uh, I guess what I mean is like who has approached you? Can we ask that?
Yeah.
Wouldn't be fair to the.
Gotcha, okay, that's why. Are they going to be, uh.
But we would choose to sell it to or?
Oh, yeah, yes, yes, I mean, it's our property, we choose and we sell it.
Is it going to be like a closed bid or a secret?
Correct. Oh, and yes, 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 yeah, we have to do that, we have to even see what asbestos, what we have to do to clean it. Uh, there's, um, the. Home thing, the well that we have to do, we have.
Done an entire lot, right?
We have, we have to parcel it because the towers are part of that. And there's some, uh, sheds, again, we would move those sheds out of there, so there's a process and it needs to have a water meter.
So when you say surplus, old city shop.
Needs some.
When you say, I, I get the sell, but what does that mean, just cheap?
No.
So market value?
If, if I can, just, just to remind you, in order for the city to, uh, transfer property, it has to be declared surplus. Once you declare surplus, then it can be sold, traded, whatever the city needs to do. But in order to even move forward in that process, it has to be.
I, I get that part of the surplus, that's why I was asking, is it something we want to surplus?
I'm suggesting we do, because I.
He doesn't want to be a landlord.
And, and it really is, it's, do you want to put it in a bunch of money to do the payment, so it's good to rent and then how much? And again, it really is a very good incentive, it's a great piece of property.
Yes.
That's just. I'd like, I'd like to weigh in on this.
Yeah, absolutely.
Don't, I don't know how much storage space you're going to have in your new facility, so don't. Don't overplan, because the only best thing about that building is the storage.
Yeah.
And if you are going. Somebody has to make a decision, whether you're keeping, and this would probably be part of that decision. That you would then keep the old shop building, the, the water, the old water building. Because there was talk about taking that out and moving, you know, having all that space over in the new water building. So.
Correct.
You can't just decide, I've got a whole building uptown, I've got a new building downtown. Or down by the thing and then just start. We can't put one more thing down at the old water, at the water building we have now.
Correct. It's going to be a new building, we're going to have to build.
Oh, I know, I, I understand that, you just make sure that that new shop building is going to accommodate all your dreams. And that's the long and short of that story, is that we, we're just, the city is just like every other person. You buy a piece of property and you move in it and then you fill it up and you start renting the storage down the street. So, you know, make sure that you have your measurements. And this thought out really clearly.
Correct, the, the goal is to use all of that shop area down by the water tower to, like, really to create this. Like, everything would be housed down there, like, in all of the, like, doing a sand shed, things like that, which is something that we need. And we have.
There's a lot of piping. This is a subject that we can talk about better, but there, you can't go down there and just start setting up buildings. Just because it's. Just because it's got grass down at the shop there.
Okay, correct.
Because there's a ton of really big water pipes in there and things like that, that. This just needs to be, have a really good thought out plan and. Have something new on the, up there on the corner would be great, but.
You've just received the council from our, the council, some council from our ex-city manager.
Well, it's.
Retired city manager, that's how I took it.
Well, yes, because we just, you know, we're buying hickory sheds like they're going out of style.
Correct.
Can the property be divided, can we keep the shop for storage until a time when? We determine that it's no longer required. Oh, that we can get all our hickory shed stuff.
Yep.
Somewhere else.
Obviously, we're not gonna move anything out until it's all excepted. Because there is just, again, it's just that process because it does take time. And and the old city shop, I mean, it is the, what is gonna take to make it sellable, I mean, there's a, it's really a depth.
We're not surpassing it tonight, are we?
No, no.
So my other question is, is what are the benefits of? Obviously, obviously, the benefit of selling it or making a surplus and getting getting rid of it or whatever, it's gonna increase some costs. On our end, correct, in order to prepare that.
Yeah.
And then potentially sell it for the market value and then make a profit off that, whatever. And then what is the the downside if we decided to continue to rent it out but renovate it? Would that? You know, was that gonna be too much for the city, I know you mentioned that you don't want to be a landlord, but do other cities rent out? Old spaces and and uh would that be beneficial to the city?
No, I I I had people coming in and out of there, I've shown that probably a dozen times over the years. And the amount of work that it would take to make it. Yeah, you just can't make your money back.
Gotcha.
No, it's it's.
And it and it really is, the main benefit is in like a business. Right on Main Street, that is way far more valuable than having a shop for the city on that.
You know, too, we need to think about. So here, if you can think about this. You know that the road, the street that is not a street? So if you go to sell that. Somebody's gonna have to figure out. If that's an alley with a water thing in the middle of it or what? But I would think that's gonna, that's gonna be our hardest part. Is figuring out that street business, whether that's a street or just parking for that lot. Because I never looked into that.
Okay, there's your other goal.
My understanding was is that that's the reason why the Grange never paved because it's. It's not, or why it's not paved, because it's not a city street at all. The I think the Grange part is theirs and they would have to do that, that was was under the understanding, it was just a market area, that was a.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure.
Might be just more of a problem till it gets fixed.
Yeah, well, you can always move the fire hydrant, you know, I mean, yeah.
All right, moving right along. We'll go to police report.
Well, everybody should have a coffee of. The police report for September, as you can see uh at the top. Uh, our call for service and incidents have skyrocketed. Um, we, over a hundred, close to a hundred calls more than one month from the last, um, we are hammered. Our DUIs continue to increase, we're doing emphasis patrols, we're bringing in. Uh, outside agencies, we're trying to educate the community. Uh, we're doing public information uh uh stuff, trying to reduce the amount of DUI, but they're still there. Um, and we're gonna continue to enforce it. Uh, I can tell you we're busy. Um. And 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 that's with having an officer in the academy. Uh, who wasn't on the road and another officer who's on medical, so that's that's two bodies down that uh. Uh, we saw that kind of increase, so. Uh, we're working hard to try to stay up on it, try to uh continue to provide professional service. Are there any questions about uh the statistics that you've been providing?
Are we in comparison to other neighboring towns as far as like? Percentage of stops, are are they, I mean, I don't know if you.
I don't really look at their their stats, but I I would tell you that they're probably gonna be.
Deal with the same.
The same issue.
That's that's what I was wanting to know, it's just it an issue all around us, not just specifically here.
Yeah, I I it. It's definitely a lot of stuff going on and it has a lot to do with uh. Probably about measure one ten with the decriminalization of narcotics and and several issues along that line. Um, our behavioral health um issues that continue to plague uh communities, so um. And I can get into a little more of that conversation uh about uh the last conference I attended, so. Uh, hopefully that'll answer your question, anybody else?
Well, we're just lucky that we have uh uh officers and police that are able to uh deal with the things that we have. We may not, we may have individuals who don't like how everything's done, but at least when you call the police, the police are coming and you know they're coming. Uh, that's better than other areas, that's better than Portland, that's better than, you know. When you're gonna call the police, somebody's coming, and that's a nice thing to know and.
So we are a twenty-four seven uh full-service police agency that uh. Uh, we take that serious, there is somebody on twenty-four hours a day, seven days. Um, that's tough to do when you're shorthanded, people vacations. Uh, so we're we're working really hard to try to make sure that.
So when I make a phone call at one thirty in the morning, uh, don't need to give a date, I know that I I I can get somebody. And it's probably, and it's not, and it's, there may be a deputy, there may not be a deputy, but I know I'm gonna get a city of Boardman police officer. And unless something is really a riot. But I've been lucky enough that when I've made those three, four phone calls at one thirty in the morning. I got somebody there that's gonna help me solve the problems going on in my house.
Uh, so if I can, um, I was at the two shares conference in Salem last week and. Uh, we had uh Rob Rob let with the Association of County, it was the League of Urban Cities, uh, they go count all there. Um, about measure one ten is a a a major topic right now, they have proposed um. Two and are working on a third uh uh amendment to that ballot, which you just tried to address the issue. The one that stands out to me the most, um, which I really hope it gets a lot of steam. They would re-criminalize narcotics. Um, and then if you go and get the. Substance abuse rehab and show that you've completed it, then they will dismiss the citation instead of. Dismiss it before you even do anything, so that will still remain, it 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 will have more teeth in it. To get people to get that rehab. Right now, there's no teeth, you get a citation and it's a citation, no more than a tragic citation for having nothing but a man or cocaine. Um, you tell the courts, you're gonna go and get rehab. They dismiss the citation, it's not a crime and they don't have to go. There's no teeth, there's no penalty, so hopefully with the new changes in ballot measure one ten. Uh, they'll re-criminalize it, at least have some teeth to to try to get people to get the rehab that they need to try to get on. I'm gonna be a a very strong advocate, somebody who has a substance abuse problem doesn't deserve to be in jail and shouldn't be in jail. But until we have something that works to. Uh, uh, get them off of those controlled substances, there's gotta be some kind of uh. Mechanism in place to hold them down. Uh, the last thing I would say, um, and I'm I'm really frustrated, I think that most public employees are. Um. First, this is a major issue, it always has been, but um. When I got here fifteen years ago, or in already fifteen years ago. Um, fire and police were able to retire at fifty-five years of age. Our legislatures changed this the last three years, so it went from fifty-five to fifty-seven, fifty-seven to fifty-nine, now sixty. You can't have cops and firemen doing this job at sixty years of age. I'm sorry, I'm twenty-nine. I cannot, I cannot. It, if at my age, if I get out, I've lost muscle mass over the years and and it's gonna be hard for me to fight a twenty-five-year-old out on the street. I'm not gonna be as effective as I was when I was twenty-five years old. Es- especially, so um the the mentality of keeping cops on the road at sixty years of age is just. It's mind-boggling to me, but it's a state. Now, I I won't, I won't say that. We 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 need to talk to our legislators, explain that, I'm not trying to get an early retirement. I just know that if if I have an officer that's out there at sixty years of age pushing a car around town and they're in a physical altercation. At some point, you're not gonna be able to fight with this person, what are they gonna do? They're gonna use the best means that that they're trying to to survive, that means they're gonna use a a more uh uh excessive force than going hands-on. Not a good situation, it's a bad idea, they need to get it back to the way it was supposed to be, but that's gonna take everybody. You, when you go to your uh League of Urban Cities uh uh meetings, telling these legislatures. We can't keep doing this. At at what, what, when are they gonna stop? Are they gonna wait till seventy to let these cops retire, these firemen retire? I know my minutes. I can only go for so long, so if you're fighting with somebody for ninety seconds, that's an eternity. An absolute eternity and that's when you're in great shape. So, anyway. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Building Department report.
I am here.
Yeah, you're just all ready for it, right?
Say again?
You're all ready for your report?
There's not much to report. We've uh, you guys should have. This. And we've kind of gone up and down this month, we're kind of slow. But it's been kind of nice because that gave us some breathing room to uh work out the kinks that citizens serve, which is working really well. Uh, there's really not much to report, uh, we have three code. Uh, three codes that are changing to a new cycle. Presidential code, electrical code, and plumbing code are going to the two thousand twenty-three. So it's three years, every three years the codes change, so that means I gotta go back to school. Um, I know building inspectors can work till they're seventy, so. Um, well, any questions?
Yeah, uh, what's the progress on our city hall on our addition, anything uh? New or interesting or exciting to share about that?
They're getting close to rough in, that's. About three eighths of the way there, when the sheet rock is ready for paint, that's halfway. So.
Okay.
Our job has been kind of going slow, some of it is because of supply chain issues, but um. It's just, it's going slower than a lot of other projects I've seen, I and there's really no explaining that. But soon.
Lynn, I I said this at the last council, I just wanted to reiterate it. I appreciate that you and I'm assuming Tony have taken the time to separate out the moral county nine seven eight one eight and the moral county non. Nine seven eight one eight, because I think that it reflects more of what happened in this region. Of Boardman, even though it's not in our purview, so I appreciate doing that, thank you.
Oh, sure.
Who, Jay, oh, Jackie, yeah, Lynn and Jack.
Tony helps too.
Well, thank you.
Thanks a lot, Lynn.
All right, thanks, guys.
You bet, Public Works Department.
Yeah, the report.
We do.
Okay, it's a silly thing, but I would love to see how many meters were read each month. So that I could see how many more new meters are going in each month, is that silly?
I mean, you want previous months on there.
Yeah, is that silly?
I can be done.
There's new meters installed, just.
That's on here too.
All right. So that's what you're looking for, you're not even for the beverage bag.
Okay, I would like to know. So what are we doing with Ferguson?
Just first, we found it from our app. And we did our last manual read and we will be starting installation. And we'll be working on the programming, I believe, right? So yeah, so starting now, we're starting to put the radios in, start with our meters that we originally metered and everything changed. And once we get those done, the radios themselves should go real quick on the rest of them. So, I'll see how well that goes, but once we get radios in, now we have to build a radio. Before we put them in, we would have to manually go in there and take them to run down. Actually, because we didn't have communications and radio.
So do you have all your equipment here yet?
Most of them, yes, we don't have every meter. We have all the meters that we changed out, we have, but we don't have a hundred percent of the radios, but we have, we got boxes and boxes on the way out. So we've got many, several beats of radios put in on the side.
So when, when? Okay, I was really excited when I seen the the last time that we put in. No, I wasn't so excited, I guess, when it said we put in three new meters or three and a half or something. And I thought, well, we're gonna be from here till the turn of the century at three a a month. But so I, that's why I'm asking, so we're doing, we're gonna be doing better than that.
Oh, yes.
And when are we starting this?
This week. I haven't been here in years.
So it's October, it's October.
Yes.
When do you think you'll be finished with that?
Oh, we'll be in November, we might go to Petra and.
So you think you'll be ready to operate that system and by the first of December or so?
Yeah.
So then will we write the checks?
Yeah, we have been writing checks as they've been coming in.
Going in.
Like the antenna we just got, that one was on backorder for months.
Oh.
So we're kind of waiting for that to do our first ten that we wanted to test and to test the electronic battery, so. Been kind of baby steps, but I think we're at a point where we're down to installing all the radios onto the meters. Um, so that we can put the switch and go live for everyone.
Good, before, I mean, I just hope that before it gets really bad weather or something.
Well, that might be their incentive.
Driving along so long, okay. Okay, good, thanks.
Any other questions about Public Works Department?
I know, I do. Who's responsible? Okay, okay, I have a sidewalk that occurred, or maybe I don't have a curb, maybe I only have a curb. You know, the weeds grow on the straight side of curb, then they grow out into the street in the cracks. Is that our problem?
You you as a city or you as a owner?
You as the city.
Yes.
That's our problem.
Yes, it is. But the the property owner has some buying, there's a lot. Mountain Street, I don't believe, on the edge of the sidewalk, they're supposed to, well, it's time for you to meet me in the sidewalk, which is a bit long in the street.
But.
I can, we've got some shady property right in there, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I don't know, just, you know, I've got more time than ever, so I can find, and I'm still swatting weeds and seven hundred yards, so.
Well, you can go walk down the street with your weed prayer and uh during your free time.
I always did.
Good, go play down my streets. Break down my streets.
I live on the state street.
No, because that I did, I think that's part of my job is to spray until my tank goes empty. So I used to spray at the post office everywhere.
That's funny.
But now it's against, I mean, I might not do that. I might be with you with the key to your water meter.
Yeah, we're trying to set up, right? Yeah, I can get back to talk to you about it, because, yeah, I I do need to talk to you. So. Mr. Hammond, we have ten minutes left.
Okay, so this is all encompassing. In my report, number five, the council rules update. Before we can do a charter, I was told by LLC that we should do a council rules update. That goes along with number nine. There's a thought, do you wanna do a monthly work session where it's always scheduled? You talk about. You talk about the city shop, you talk about these various things, there's things that come up, or I can just schedule monthly work.
I was thinking quarterly.
Yeah.
Notice I got a what? Yeah.
I mean, I'm I'm not in a big fan on a monthly work session.
Are you okay with doing one right before council?
Well, not every month because now we're six to nine. And I. I would, I would like to do, if we're gonna do a work session, I would like to like one quarter. To where I can take a couple hours and give my time to be able to do that, that might make it, I don't wanna do it after the end of the day of work. That that that's the, that's the thing. I mean, I'm ordered.
And I.
Yeah.
And I get that. Can I just share one? Sometimes things come up and await. A whole quarter. I mean, again, I'm trying to get as much information. I need you guys to give me input back and direction. And the only way I can do that is through a work session or a council, and sometimes it's hard to sit like in a council session and to. Go in depth like we need to, like to have an open discussion about that.
Can we do, can we do bi-monthly? Or not bi-monthly, but every two months?
Yeah.
I I was thinking maybe the mayor could establish a committee to do the. Council rule. And report out quarterly for that quarterly thing. And if you wanted business that was more workshop-y. You know, it could do it in maybe thirty minutes instead of a whole hour.
So when you go together as a committee, it's not a core, and we don't have to host it as a work session.
But they could do some of the heavy lifting of the project and then bring it back to the full council.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
But then. The business that you're talking about, that you wanna have open discussion for, when not before council meeting, maybe it doesn't have to be a full hour then. If it's not big and you do it frequently enough.
There's just a few things coming up. The CIP is a bigger one. That again, the charter we have until May is the whole, and then the council rules. There's just a few things that are.
Well, I get the 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 idea of the council rules. I really would like each one of us to. Dig into the council rules.
Perfect, and that's why it's included.
And and talk and, you know, put your input into it. I mean, I go through it once a month. But to be able to say, what do I like, what do I don't like?
Correct.
And then be able to, that might be a time that would be more than an hour.
Correct, yes.
You know.
Definitely.
I still like the idea of quarterly, and it doesn't mean that you have to wait months before we do our first one. If there's things that are pressing, we can schedule it. You know, in a month, let's say, but that way you have everything that you want covered because the next one isn't gonna happen until the next one.
Okay, so I'll send something out. And and email where we can pick something and yeah, maybe we do something sooner than later to get some of these. Topics and do.
Because something that might, you know, if it's something urgent and you know it's, you know, a half hour, forty-five minutes. Maybe that is a time that we need to meet at six o'clock and be able to hammer some things out for an emergency, but if, you know. If we need to take some time to talk about some things, you know, every two or every three months might be something that we need to think about.
And it definitely will get to that point. There just seems to be a little bit more right now going on, but it's just like council rules. But the the charter update a few months in.
The Princeville Island doesn't need to have a meeting every month with our, with an extra meeting with us every month.
Hey, we have to group, didn't we?
We did. Yes, and and I really liked that.
So you got too much free time.
Well, I really like.
Yeah.
Tonight's here and I didn't realize I was having such a good time. Oh, why is the charter so in a big rush for you?
Nineteen eighty-six.
Yeah.
Nineteen eighty-four.
So so.
Is it eighty-five?
If so, if we don't get to it till twenty twenty-four, what is the big rush about doing it between now and then?
And I guess it's a philosophical concept is we're starting off new, let's start off new, let's let's have a good foundation.
But I think, but we don't have to have until to get on the ballot. That's really the urgent thing.
I know.
But I think the council rules are a little more important.
They are, I mean, correct.
The charts rules. You know what I mean?
Yes, I agree.
I agree with that too. That's more important than the chart.
Figure out why we're so on fire. We've waited twenty or thirty years. Or that I can't wait another. That I can't pass this summer and get into February before I'm on fire.
Yes, there is definitely a waiting.
In government, yes.
Um, if you're at a time, give a real two-nos to Carla. And everyone who gets TGN, Brad, two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. That's so cool. That means we will just go out for the TSP. You know, they just take care of it. They even help us find someone to do it, so that's one thing off partly. We literally have to think of.
No, congratulations to her.
And the only thing I really wanted to share, and Carla's gonna give a little input, just on the project update. Just so you know where we are with the boardman and main stoplight. Process. We were told, we went back and forth with ODOT. The last meeting that we had, they really, they gave us two charges. Carla, what are the two charges?
So we have to determine two things. We have to determine that it is. Oh, gosh, it's it's late where I am. It's eleven o'clock, so it has to align with the Main Street IAMP. And we have to show that it needs at least one, if not multiple warrants, which is a part of kind of the ODOT evaluation system, so. We're gonna be continuing to work with Matt Hugart, with Kittleson on that, as well as with Mike Lees. To go through and and make those, make our case and then take that back to ODOT. And we'll see what happens after that, but. We kind of pushed some buttons at the last meeting, as Brandon referred to. I guess I pushed some buttons at the last meeting and said, we we need to know what your answer is gonna be, ODOT. We we need a path and. They finally kind of came back with something, so. It's been a long, painful process with ODOT, but I think there's light at the end of the tunnel.
Correct, and the light at the end of the tunnel is it's on us now. Those two things that we have to do is us. It's not ODOT. Nothing. We do those two things, which we will do. It's not gonna be an issue. There we go.
They should have blessing, well, you have blessing.
Yeah. And it and it is unfortunate it's taken this long because it really has been like a total three sixty. Anyway, so that that is very positive in that fact, that we will be able to move forward, that it all is in our. And that's it. Any questions?
No, thank you, Mr. Hammond. Counselor's report, yeah, counselor's.
Just what I just supposed to talk?
Yes, that would be a great time.
Okay, I got thirty seconds. Just that maybe we should come up with some kind of idea for. To be a little bit more productive at our city or county meeting. That is just my opinion. That was the short version.
Yeah. And to get everyone there to share their input, even when they don't wanna share their input, that would be a really good thing. Instead of sitting there like they're really sad. Do that. Any other comments? I have zero mayor comments other than thank you for everybody's comment. This meeting was adjourned.